Good morning and welcome to the December 5th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good morning and we'd like to remind people to silence their cellphone if they have one with. And meeting documents are next to Commissioner Bender. And if you need a listening device, Craig or Carol will be able to help you with that. With that, we'll go to routine business. Item one is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to move item seventeen to basically where item ten is and to bump every other one down a notch. And with that amendment, I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Commissioner Bender?
I'd also like to add to that motion that we authorize the Chair or the Vice Chair to be able to sign any contracts approved today, as I know the Chair may have to leave.
That's a friendly amendment from the Vice Chair.
I would second that amendment.
Okay, we have two amendments. One, to move item seventeen to item ten. Are we moving ten then to seventeen?
It's gonna just bump everything down one notch, so that would be eleven.
You're gonna mess up with my head with the numbers, but that's all right.
Olivia will keep you safe.
And also to amend, the Vice Chair and the Chair could sign contracts because I will have to leave today for personal reasons. First, we have to do those amendments separately, one at a time. The first amendment is to amend the agenda and change item seventeen to item ten. And we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and the second amendment is to have the Vice Chair and/or the Chair sign contracts today. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, to amend the agenda totally, to approve the amendment as amended, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for your coordination on that. Item two is to approve the minutes of November twenty-eighth.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the County Commission meeting minutes of the twenty-eighth. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is the joint meeting of the same day of the Minnehaha County and City of Sioux Falls.
We've approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the county and city joint meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three is bills to be paid of four million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars and twelve cents.
Pay the bills.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Litz, do you have any comments?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Auditor's Office. And I did wanna clarify a little bit on what's going on here. On page one, we had credits for over seven million, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and then also another one hundred and thirty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. Those are credits. And then if you move to page fourteen and you look at what's going on there, you net out what the credits are versus the amounts totaled on there. And what the net thing, net amount is, is our bills look exceptionally high. But the truth is, is that we've got that seven million dollar refund coming out of the action. And if you net those things out, our actual debt payment, instead of being that high seven million dollars, is at three point seven two six million dollars. Now, the refunding happened three years ago. We locked it in at some interest rates and we're able to obtain some savings. Even though the interest rate has not shifted that much, we still did get a better rate. So it turned out to be a good deal. It just drug out on our books for three years having that seven million dollars. So our total debt will drop down as well. And then I also wanted to mention, as has been inferred to the Auditor and the Commission Chair, today at eleven o'clock, we'll go sign some documents to place forty-six million dollars worth of tax-exempt municipal bonds on the market for financing of the jail today. So it's kind of a landmark day.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions for Mr. Litz? If not, we have a motion to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There are no reports. Item five, personnel action. Carrie Dever, consider a motion to approve routine personnel action. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve routine personnel action. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We have a short list for you today. We have Jessica Sprecker in the jail celebrating five years of service, Emily Astis in the JDC celebrating ten years of service, and Tom Devaney at the highway celebrating twenty years of service. So short, but a lot of years there.
Yep, there are a lot of years. Thank you to those employees who have dedicated their time and efforts to the county. We do sincerely appreciate that. And item C are the volunteers.
For what, fourth, fifth month in a row? We're talking close to three hundred volunteers. We had two hundred and eighty-seven in November helping out in close to ten areas around county.
Yep. In-kind contributions are incredible by people who are dedicated to make that happen. So thank you so much. Item D is to authorize a Chair or Vice Chair to sign an amendment to administer services agreement between the county and UMR Inc. for the 2018 medical service fees.
You might recall, in early September, you approved signing contract amendments with three of the four entities that helped us run our self-insured plan. Today, I'm asking for approval on the amendment to the administrative services agreement with UMR, who's our third-party administrator. This is part of the three-year contract renewal that we've negotiated for pricing. So really, the two major changes I'm seeing there is, one, there's a replacement of the arbitration provision with mediation. And then the second changes all relate to the medical fee services for everything that UMR does versus a TPA. That can include anything from stop-loss, interface fees, to pharmacy. The major one is the medical services fee. I outlined for you in the briefing memo that we're looking at about a three percent increase for 2018 and a two percent for 2019 and a two percent for 2020. So you'll see these back each year, but I'm asking for your authorization or for the Chair to sign for the administrative services agreement for 2018.
Thank you, Carrie. Any questions for Carrie?
I would just like to make a comment. Having just finished some employee contracts at my real job for medical coverage and fees and all that kind of stuff, what we have been able to accomplish through the HR department with very small increases based on the management of the program is incredible compared to what we're seeing literally across the community, so.
Thank you, and I would share that with all those entities who are helping us, especially our care providers of Aaron Sanford.
Yep. There's nobody in Sioux Falls that's having that kind of response, I don't think, this year. So thank you for all your hard work.
Absolutely.
We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Now, we have a motion and a second for the UMR medical service fee agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item E is to consider a resolution establishing the county elected officials' annual salaries.
This is something we'll look at every December. South Dakota codified law sets the minimum annual salaries for state's attorneys, sheriff, auditor, county treasurer, and register of deeds. If we want to go above those minimums, we have to pass a resolution. The resolution in front of you reflects the salaries that you talked about during budget hearings. It's an approximate three percent increase for each of those five elected positions.
Any questions for Carrie? Is there a motion?
There is.
Is there a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the established county elected officials' annual salaries. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. And then item F is a briefing on the employee handbook, proposed changes for 2018.
It's a fairly lengthy project, if you'll bear with me as I go over this. This project actually started as a joint project between Lincoln County and Minnehaha County. So we do contract services for them. We thought it might be a good idea to review both handbooks and have a similar layout and where we have similar approaches to have the same language on policies and procedures. Of course, there are a lot of areas that we don't. It's turned into a very valuable project for both. I'm very thankful we went through this. It's probably the first comprehensive review we've done of our own handbook in, I don't know, according to some of our committee members, you know, maybe twenty-plus years. Certainly have had updates, but this is the first review. With that said, there aren't a lot of substantive changes. A lot of it's reorganization, a better layout, section headings that are improved, so it's easier to find language. Normally, we would redline a document, but because there was so much reorganization, unfortunately, we weren't able to do that. And it's a fairly lengthy document, so attached to your briefing memo, I gave you a list of summary of changes of the overall changes. Again, a lot of it's layout, but because we wanted to make sure that people understood what changes there were, we provide a summary of the changes by section. As I look through that, most of it, again, isn't really changing how we do anything by procedure. It's just improving the language and clarifying. However, there are a few different procedural changes that I want to make sure that you're aware of. Right now, we don't have it in our handbook. It's part of past meeting minutes that we do provide a shift differential to some staff that includes JDC and facilities for their evening and night shift individuals. Right now, that's set at forty cents per hour. We're recommending that that move up to fifty cents per hour with this handbook revisions. The financial impact of that's fifteen hundred dollars and can be absorbed within the existing department budgets. It's also consistent with what you'd see us do for some of our contract employees. Another procedural change that we're recommending is on our on-call policy. Right now, we have an on-call policy for IT, facilities, and human services, the groups that might have to take calls on weekends or in evening hours. We're asking for your approval on a two-hour callback provision, which would mean if somebody had to come back to the worksite after having left, that we would guarantee them a two-hour, at least two hours of pay. Again, we don't think the impact of this will be too significant. Most of those staff in those three departments can handle calls or handle the issues by calls. Facilities, you know, sometimes does have to come down to take care of a plumbing issue or something else on an immediate basis. Another procedural change is under PTO donation. Currently, you have to be here for a year before you can donate. We're recommending removing that. This goes back to the vacation policy days. Now that people accrue at a slightly higher rate, we'd like to allow them to donate if they wish, as long as they have a minimum balance. Under travel, we're recommending a small change here, too. Right now, what we do for travel pay is we pay the minimum in accordance with Fair Labor Standards Act. What we'd like your approval to do is to pay staff for all travel time. Right now, it depends on when you're traveling, if it's overnight, if it's during your regular working hours or not. The reason we'd like this is it'll be a lot easier to be consistent from one department to the next and a lot more fair when we have groups of employees traveling at the same time. This might have some financial impact. We're figuring up to about fifty-five hundred dollars. The department heads who are impacted by this, they'll feel that they can flex out the majority of that overtime to minimize that impact. So again, we're not looking at a substantial amount, and it could be absorbed within departments' existing budgets. Another procedural change is we're recommending replacement of our formal grievance procedure that has established timeframes and deadlines for a complaint process. What we'd like to do is make a change that's a little bit more consistent with our at-will employment practices, which are currently in place, but retain a method for employees to bring complaints. So what we're recommending is a replacement of that procedure with an open-door complaints policy. Again, if you look at all these, most of them involve an expanded financial benefit for staff. We're figuring under seven thousand dollars total impact. The majority of that could be offset through flexing of hours, and the remaining could be covered within counties or departments' existing budgets. Any questions on some of those procedural items?
So you want to have any questions for Carrie? Commissioner Bender?
I have more of a comment. I just, you know, really want to thank Carrie and her team, everybody who volunteered to be on this committee because they spent a lot of time. I do a lot of work with employee handbooks. They're really important, but they're not the most exciting read in the world. And so I think, you know, they really serve as basically an audit of all-year employment practices. And so it's really time well-spent. They've been able to identify some issues and work through some issues. And I think that the items that Carrie's bringing forward that we get a little time to think about here, and then we have a couple weeks, and then we'll come back. But I think that they're all make a lot of sense from a fairness standpoint to the employees and from a general practices standpoint, so.
Just to add on to that, it is substantial. We're talking ninety pages only because we're giving you current or proposed language and former language. So we would like to take a couple weeks, have you have some time to review it, and we'll come back and ask for your approval on the nineteenth, if you're ready to do that. We're hoping or shooting for an effective date of December thirtieth, since that coincides closely with the beginning of the new year, plus it is the beginning of a pay period. But I, too, want to echo what Commissioner Bender said. We had a lot of people who were involved in this project. I just want to thank particularly DJ Boothie, Carrie Benz, Pam Nelson, Diane Reifkammer, Mark Krenz, Bill Hoskins, and Julie Hofer, who were some of our department heads, who agreed to spend the hours over several months looking through each provision and each sentence. So couldn't have done it without them.
Just to let you know, if you don't read this over the Christmas holidays, there will be a test on all one-hundred-and-one pages of this.
Oops, sorry, shorted the page count.
Yep. It says a briefing, so we don't need to take any action. Any other questions for Carrie? Item seven, thank you.
Thank you.
Is, first reading, authorize the county auditor to publish notice of public hearing on amendment to the nineteen-ninety revised zoning ordinance for the county to be held on December twenty-sixth at nine AM.
Thank you, Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. And this morning, this is a relatively routine item. Today's the first hearing, and I'm requesting that you authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice for the second reading and final adoption, which would take place on December twenty-sixth, same place here in this room at nine AM. The request is to rezone approximately eleven acres from A1 agriculture to C commercial. The property is located basically at Wild Water West. It's on the north side of Wild Water West. I think we're all familiar with that. And it has gone before the Planning Commission last Monday night, a week ago Monday. We had a public hearing there. The Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously. There was no testimony or interest or participation or interest from the surrounding properties. The applicant is rezoning this property because they will be doing some further commercial development of Wild Water West and be expanding into this area. That future use will be considered by the Planning Commission at a later date. But the first step is to get the rezoning in place that will allow for the future expansion of Wild Water West with their plans. I'd be glad to answer any questions. I've provided the auditor with the hearing notice, the fact of adoption, and the ordinance, so I think we're ready to go on that front, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone have any questions for him?
I'd make a motion to authorize this publication, and I would have a comment also.
Second. A motion and a second to authorize the, yeah, publish a notice of public hearing on December twenty-sixth at nine AM.
The comment is basically, Wild Water West, believe it or not, is zoned ag. And this is from the old days, before we got as organized as we are today. And so it's a little bit of an odd duck, but we have a lot of odd ducks somewhere.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to publish the first, or publish the notice of the public hearing on December twenty-sixth at nine AM. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. There are no planning and zoning notices. Item nine is a petition for compromise of lien. The first is DPNO forty-one oh eight for two thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents. Good morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commissioned Administrative Officer. Before you today is two different liens for compromise, two different DPNOs. And the first one is for two thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars. The applicant has submitted a request to compromise and release lien DPNO four-one-zero-eight-eight with no payment, only insofar as the real property known as nineteen-oh-five West Twenty-Four Street. If approved as requested, this action would leave this full amount of the lien in place against the individual who is named on the lien. The lien represents poor relief and legal representation for the period nineteen-ninety-nine and two thousand and thirteen, and existed before the property was sold to a couple on August eleventh, two thousand and sixteen, on a three-year contract for deed for one-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars. The buyers, one being the person who incurred the lien, defaulted on this contract for deed purchase around April fifth, two thousand and seventeen, and moved out. The applicant and his attorney have made multiple attempts to contact the buyers in pursuit of a quick claim to transfer the property back to the applicant, and as of yesterday, was successful at getting those documents signed. There is a real estate transaction that is pending to sell the home again to a different buyer. However, the closing date has been postponed until the property is released from the lien. Four-year review is the application, along with a narrative, lien summary, contract for deed, attorney's notice of default, and right to cure. Questions that we can answer?
Any questions from the Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the transaction as Carol outlined the request. I do have a comment, though.
I'll give a second and I have a question.
We get two or three of these a year, I think, where people sell a property, contract for deed, to somebody that winds up getting county assistance for one reason or another, legal or whatever. And I wish that people selling these properties understood that, you know, these risks occur that the person that they're contract for deed with may wind up with liens on their property and could avoid that somehow. I don't know if, you know, we're not going to collect this money from, without that real estate to put a lien on, we're not going to get this money from these people either, I don't think. Makes me sad.
Commissioner Karski, do you have any other comments?
A question, and so we're removing the lien from the property and leaving it on the individual. My understanding, and I don't know if anybody can answer this, but a lien on an individual does not show up on a credit report anymore. So if this person, I don't know how, my question is, is there a discovery process if this person applies for another loan? To your point, Commissioner, where that could even be found?
I don't believe there is, Commissioner, but I know that sometimes people come into some property or have a personal injury lawsuit that they get some money. And, you know, during some of those inquiries, we wind up getting, we're owed about forty-nine million dollars by people who've received benefit from county taxpayers, and we get some of that money back, but most of the older ones, very, very few seem to come back with any money. I really appreciate the people that do make, say, twenty-five-dollar-a-month payments for eight years or something, but unfortunately, we don't get enough of those.
Do you have any comments that you'd like to make?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would just offer that, obviously, cure the lien attached because the contract for deed was recorded, triggering, you know, the knowledge. And, you know, most of the time, you'd see something show up when it was a docketed judgment. So if it was a docketed judgment from a court, and occasionally, unless there's a court order here, you know, you'd have those slight nuances between a lien and a judgment, so.
I want to, we did get a legal opinion because of clarifying a couple things, and I want to read that, and that's what the motion should say, so we make sure we cover all our bases. And then if the applicant wants to make comments, they can. However, they're not required to. They don't need to identify themselves. They don't need to move from where they're at. So they're more than happy to make comments, but we're, no need to make any clarifications, and you can stay where you're at. But I'm going to read what the legal documentation should say. And it's DPNO forty-one oh eight-eight, and it's to compromise and release the lien in full with no payment, only as it applies to the real property legally described as Lot One, Block Seven, Park Ridge addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, located at nineteen-oh-five West Twenty-Four Street, Sioux Falls, leaving a full amount of two thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty cents lien in place against the lienee.
I believe that was my motion, sir.
It was, but we have a second on that?
My second.
Again, you do not need to identify yourself, even if we all know who you are, but that's beside the point.
I'd be glad to identify myself. My name's Robin Miller. I'm the applicant, or in my case, I'd call myself the victim. Probably made two mistakes. One is, it is based on, Tom and Barb Everest actually sold us our first house, my wife and I, under a contract for deed years ago, and helped us get started in homeownership. So I appreciate them for that. We ran into a couple, and we thought a contract for deed would be a great way to help them out as well. First mistake was trying to help somebody out, probably in this case. Second mistake, I think I heard, was I recorded that deed. But it was a contract, in my mind, it's a contract for a deed, it's not a deed. And somehow then, because that got filed, and the county puts that debt against my wife and I. So I came down when this couple defaulted, cost me roughly five, six thousand dollars to repair the house and get it back ready for sale. I came down to the county and asked, can I sell it? And they said, well, if you pay back taxes, twice they missed taxes, if you pay that, okay, it should be clear. So I put it on the market, I sell it. Closing date was November tenth. Title company tells me, nope, you've got a lien against your property. That's the first time I found out about it. In my mind, there's something in the system that's broken. It victimizes us, who try to help other people get started in housing. So here we are today, after that, roughly, what did I figure, about seven or eight thousand dollars in lost payments, and the twenty-five hundred dollars taxes. It's cost me fifteen, sixteen thousand dollars to get this straightened out, plus the extra sixty dollars yesterday to file those two papers all over again. So it's been quite an experience. And I'd call myself and my wife more victims than what was the applicants, but certainly, if you could excuse that debt against our property, we'd appreciate it. If you look at the debts, there, some of them go back twenty years, well before we were ever engaged in this property. So I thank you very much for consideration.
Since you came to the microphone, I'm going to ask if there's any questions of the individual. Do you want to have any questions?
Do you have any advice for people that are considering selling on contract for deed?
Don't do it. And don't file it, I guess. And I don't know if that's legal, but I, don't file it, because it's really not a deed. It's only a contract for a deed, and I think what happens is, the county assumes it's like a deed. And so that debt gets stuck to the property, which accrues to the real owner of the property, which was my wife and I.
You have my complete sympathy.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second based on the reading of the document. Any other comments or questions? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you for getting the quick claim deeds cleaned up so that we can move forward. I appreciate that. Second one is DPNO fifty-four five four zero for six hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents.
Commissioners, the Commission Office has received the petition of compromise for lien, the DPNO that Commissioner Benning just shared, in the amount of six hundred and forty-six dollars and ten cents, which represents both poor relief and legal representation. The applicant and her ex-spouse were married and received poor relief that was recorded on December fifteenth, two thousand and nine, in the amount of five hundred dollars. They were later divorced on June seventh, two thousand and ten. The additional lien represents the amount between November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twelve, and January twenty-first, two thousand and sixteen. And these were incurred solely by her ex-spouse for attorney representation after they were divorced. The applicant is requesting that her name be removed from the joint lien, and she has looked through her financials and determined that two hundred and fifty dollars she is offering to reimburse the county for, for those expenses that she was very grateful for receiving back in two thousand and nine. That is fifty percent of the poor relief that they received together, leaving the That is fifty percent of the poor relief that they received together, leaving the remainder of the lien to be in the name of her ex-spouse. And for your review is the application and narrative, lien summary, divorce certificate, and attorney time expenditure records, two thousand sixteen income tax, and two recent paychecks of the applicant.
Anyone have any questions for Carol?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to adjust this lien as suggested by the applicant, and I again have a comment.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Just for the audience's knowledge, this process, although it seems relatively clean compared to the first one, is still twenty pages long of documentation, so the staff and the commission has to go through and educate ourselves on a regular basis, and last week was one of those. It was extremely an emotional issue, but sometimes taking the cash, so to speak, is better than not getting anything at all, and we appreciate the people who do come to acknowledge some concerns they may have had in the past. And with that, if the applicant is here, we would be happy to hear from them, but I don't believe they are. We do have a motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you. Opportunity for public comment. If anyone has any public comments they'd like to make that is on an item that is not on the agenda, we'd be happy to hear that now. Sir?
Commissioner Charlie, this, comments are invited by me, I guess, after a phone call, and they are on the next, it is the next agenda item, so if you don't mind waiting for the next agenda item, we can-
Sorry about that.
-take care of that. Sorry about that.
Nope, no problem.
Communication part, problem on my part, so nothing reflecting on you.
I just have a question. Mark, is this your last meeting?
No.
Oh, then I'm not going to acknowledge you. I'm only going to do that once. Is there any other opportunity for public comment? We'll now go to item seventeen, which is the nine oh eight conversation that we've had multiple times about the bid that was received for the property that we own at nine oh eight Northwest. The description's legally described in item seventeen. I don't think we need to go through all of that again. And Commissioner Bender has recused herself, which we want to acknowledge. Carol, you have any other additional information?
The only thing you had requested last week was, and that is highlighted in yellow, as to what the estimated value of the land is on that two point four five million, and that is five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars at five fifty per square foot. Only thing that's changed from the information you had last week.
So we're back to chapter three in this conversation. Does anyone else have any comments that they would like to make? Just the public input. No questions for Carol? Public input, please. And you do need to identify yourself and give us your address.
Hi, this is Greg Brown with NAI Sioux Falls, Dennis Bresky and Marcus Malin. NAI Sioux Falls address is twenty-five hundred West Forty-Ninth Street, Suite one hundred, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. We are brokers with the commercial real estate firm, NAI Sioux Falls, and we're here before the commission. We've been tracking the process of this property for about a year now, and we just wanted to provide our public input, one where we believe that we would strongly recommend that the commission submit or produce an RFP to the brokerage community and consider hiring a broker to actually widely market this property for sale. The one-month timeframe to bring in a buyer for a property that's unique like this is, frankly, a very short time period, and not enough exposure to the market and to the potential buyers. You obviously have a very logical buyer that submitted an offer, that's located next door, but we feel that there could potentially be other buyers that we're just not really aware of it. By engaging a broker to represent the county and the commission to widely market that property will help create a competitive environment so that hopefully multiple offers could be submitted in getting the highest and best price for that property. I'm going to turn it over here to Dennis. We've had some conversations with Commissioner Karski, but we're actually somewhat pleased to see the value at five fifty a foot, because that's where we thought it should be as well.
Okay, thank you. Dennis, would you like to make some comments? And go ahead.
Sure. I would just reiterate that I think the best way to dispose of this asset would be to list it for sale with a commercial real estate firm and give it six months to a year, or whatever timeframe you're comfortable with, but that would be the typical timeframe for an asset like this one. There are not, you know, a lot of, we don't have that deep of a market where we have fifty, thirty thousand square foot users floating around at any given time. There might be one or two or three, and it's just a matter of timing, a lot of times, to have it out there. There's, you know, thirty brokers in this market that are very good commercial real estate agents. Give all of them time to get through the property and to be able to submit it to their prospective buyers or tenants over a period of time, I think is the best way to get the most money for this particular piece of property. An auction-type of process tends to bring out bottom fishers, people are looking to buy it at below market and hoping to turn a profit on it. Whereas this marketing process that we typically use, you're going to find a user buyer or a tenant that is there to use that building for the way it's constructed. And so it has a lot of utility. I toured through it back early in this process, and it's certainly not a tear-down in my mind. It's a building, it's a very solid building, masonry constructed, and there should be a good user out there. So we hope you'll give that a shot.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments that you'd like to make?
You know, our coming today is really, while NAI would love to be included in that RFP process, we realize it has to be competitive, and we have a number of qualified brokers in this town, so we just are advocating for our fellow brokers to be able to compete for this listing and bring the highest and best number for the county.
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with the point of view that was just presented, and I think that we should go forward with a RFP. And I know that when we had the land donated to the museum, it took a few years before that land sold. You know, it's not every day you roll out of bed and buy a property for more than a million dollars, and I think those buyers are out there, but they're not necessarily even aware of our property being on the market at this time. So I'm willing to listen to their discussion, but that would be the direction I would favor.
Commissioner Heiburger?
That's the direction I'm going to. I just don't feel that it's, that it makes any sense for us to accept a bid that's forty-five percent of its appraisal value. Now, I know there's probably different thoughts on that, and one of our concerns is that South Dakota codified law six point thirteen point four, or six dash thirteen dash four, talks about that we would have to, if we go with a realtor, that we'd have to have ninety percent, I believe, of the appraised value. I have spoken with the legislator, and I do believe it's our responsibility to go out and speak to our legislators about having that changed. I don't know why that particular ninety percent was put in place in the first place, because it totally contradicts what we did. We went out for a bid, and there's no restrictions. We can sell it for five dollars if we want to. If we got a bid for five dollars and we thought that was reasonable, we could do that. There's no restriction, but yet if we get a realtor involved, we're supposed to get ninety percent of the appraised value, so there's-
Eight percent.
Ninety.
It's ninety percent.
Yeah, ninety percent. So it contradicts itself, and I have spoken to a legislator, and I think that it's our responsibility, and we do have a meeting set up to talk to legislators, I think, this week, that we bring this forward and ask for a possible change in that. I don't know what the right number would be, whether that's totally omitted, or if we put it down to forty percent or fifty percent. We are elected officials, and we take our responsibility of watching taxpayers' money very seriously, and I think it's a slap in the face to say, you guys don't know what you're doing. And so for that reason, a lot of reasons, I'm not comfortable with that forty-five percent representation that we've been given so far.
Thank you. Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, I guess there's been no secret that I feel that this offer that we have for the property is way too low, and that we do need to consider a process that may be a little bit more time-consuming, but will give us the highest and best value for the property, so.
Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, I, listening to Commissioner Heiburger, I do believe that there is a process that could be engaged to change that minimum price that we would have to take. But, you know, we are trying to get the best we can for the citizens. I wouldn't want to, you know, sell my house for less than the appraised value, and even though, you know, might put a million dollars in my pocket, that's not my house, by the way, but I, so I, at this point, I would like to make a motion to put out a RFP to bring this property for sale.
I think we have to reject the bid that we were given.
Yeah, point of order. In that case, I will make a motion to reject the one bid that we have received.
Second.
Excuse me, we have a motion and a second to reject the one bid that was received? Any other comments, questions? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Secondly, if we want to set the new process in place for an RFP, Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have a comment before that. Since we are meeting with the legislator this next week, would it hurt if we put it back a week, or does it make any difference if we just go forward? I'm assuming an RFP is going to take some time anyway. If the law is changed, it'll take six months. It'll be the first of July before it goes into effect.
Can we, if I may, can we include in our RFP that it has to be sold for at least ninety percent?
We don't, I don't think we want to do that.
We have no way of doing it?
I don't think we would want to do that.
Okay.
Because then we've tied ourselves again.
Okay.
That's my concern.
I might comment on this charming banter here. I think that there is a provision that it can be reappraised, and, you know, if the market shows that it's not worth what the original appraisal was, it can be reappraised, and therefore, that number that we need to get it, get for it, might be lesser than what ninety percent would currently look like. I think there's an option for reappraisal.
Mr. Karski?
Commissioner Heiburger's done some of the groundwork already for taking this through a legislator to see what we can accomplish. I mean, we're only talking maybe sixty days, we'll know. I don't think that really is relevant in the whole scheme of things, and I'd be comfortable with waiting to see what happens legislatively before we move forward with this.
And my follow-up question would be, does it even make a difference? I mean, if we're just putting an RFP out for a broker, we aren't going to have in that document that says you have to get ninety percent, because obviously, we want the best price. And so I'm wondering if it's relevant to the conversation. That was kind of my question. Is it even, maybe it's more for Maggie, is it even relevant for the conversation? Can we go forward with the RFP at this point, or do we need to wait? That's my question.
I don't think you need to wait.
Okay.
I don't, I think that, again, it's just a request for proposals where you're seeing what's out there from interested brokers legislatively. You know, certainly, if there was an emergency clause, if a piece of legislation did pass, it would take an emergency clause to put it into effect before July first, at which time it'd be effective on the governor's signature, and, you know, that would presume that it would make it through the chambers and have that supermajority to get it in effect at the governor's signature. So, you know, yes, it might have a springtime effective date, but it, you know, if it did pass, it could also be until July first.
I think I'd be comfortable-
Commissioner Heiburger?
I think I'd be comfortable with going forward with an RFP at this point, then.
Commissioner Barth?
I would just say, I'm not confident in our legislature. I think that if we brought this issue to them, they'd say, well, that's just a Minnehaha County problem. You know, we don't have that problem in Jackson County or Jones County, and they wouldn't go for it.
Were you raising your hand?
Nope.
You have a motion?
I'll make, Commissioner Barth's motion is that was earlier, that we would go forward with an RFP for a broker.
I'll second my motion, that's indeed repeated.
I think we do need clarification, because the first time I did hear something about ninety percent, but no.
I don't want that in there.
No, I don't think we do. So the motion is to go with an RFP to the commercial real estate market?
Mr. Chairman, and so just for everybody's benefit, perhaps I should remind you of the language of the statute. So under six thirteen five point two, this is sale of government property through a broker. In lieu of receiving sealed bids as required by this chapter, a school district, municipality, or county may sell real property at public auction, or by listing the property with one or more licensed real estate brokers, the governing body may accept any offer for purchase of real property, provided the offer exceeds ninety percent of the appraised value of the real property. So just so that everybody's clear, that that remains in place.
Like making sausage, but I do believe it's a better process than what we have in place currently. So we have a motion and a second to send out RFPs for the nine oh eight Northwest property. Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Commissioner?
I do have just a clarification, that when I said the statute, I said six dash thirteen dash four, and it is two, and just a clarification.
Okay. Thank you this morning for coming and giving us your opinion. We do appreciate your time and efforts, and you'll be hearing from us, I'm sure, shortly. Thank you. We'll go back to item number ten, which is a public hearing to consider a special event on on-sale wine retail license, a special event off-sale package wine license, and a special event consume slash blend license for Wild Prairie Winery. Olivia?
Yes, as you mentioned, this is a special event license. Wild Prairie Winery will be providing wine to be consumed on-site, wine samples, and to sell bottles of wine at Shimmer and Shop Holiday Pontacular on December fifteenth. So they need all three licenses in order to do that, and I have not received any concerns or objections from the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, or Planning and Zoning Department.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the special event on-sale wine realtors license.
I'll second, but it's a public hearing.
Yes, it is. Is there anyone here that has any comments that they would like to make about the license request? This is a public hearing. There are no public comments. We do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item eleven, and thank you for your patience, by the way, presentation and a project summary on the Stockyard Egg Experience Barn in Plaza, Jennifer.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for having us this morning. My name is Jennifer Hazing, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Stockyards Egg Experience. I'm joined here this morning by three of our board members, our Board Chair, Jim Wooster, Treasurer Bob Schultz, and Board Member Lee Larson, and we appreciate the opportunity to educate you a bit on our project. Am I able to control the screen from here? Okay. The Stockyards Egg Experience is in the second phase of our project, and our vision overall is to, a community where citizens and visitors understand the impact of agriculture. We have four objectives, reasons why we're so passionate about pursuing this vision. The first is to preserve and interpret the history of the Sioux Falls Stockyards. The Sioux Falls Stockyards, of course, opened in nineteen seventeen, and for ninety-two years, served continuously our area. At times, it was the largest livestock market in the country. Our guests who come from places like St. Paul and Kansas City and Dallas are always surprised to hear this, and we're happy to educate them. Our second objective is to showcase the contemporary farm-to-table story. Agriculture remains South Dakota's number-one industry, as you Commissioners all know. Huge industries also in Minnesota and Iowa, areas that represent what would have been the primary trade area for the Sioux Falls Stockyards in its last twenty-five years of the primary trade area for the Sioux Falls Stockyards in its last twenty-five years of operation. It's our goal to provide dynamic, interactive learning experiences in our, in our museum and in our next phase to bring that learning to life. And we like to call it default learning. So if you come, you bring your kids or grandkids, they might learn something. They might not even know they're learning, they're having so much fun. And all of this simply communicates the role of agriculture in society and economy. Again, connecting to that broader vision, we have two phases to our project. The first is the Stockyards Egg Experience Barn, opened today at the Falls Park Horse Barn. This facility was built in about eighteen eighty, we believe. Records different, of course, through the county, then, then now. So what we know about the building, we know some from our partners at the Siouxland Heritage Museums. This building likely had an agricultural use to begin. The city acquired the property about a hundred years ago and used it for the street department, when the street department included horses and mules. And when the street department moved on, this building was adaptively reused and for a time served as a home for the Sioux Falls Arts Council. It's been used exclusively for storage until we signed a contract with the city leasing in a zero-dollar lease agreement this property to become our museum. So the two exhibits in the museum are the Stockyards exhibit highlighting that ninety-two-year history on the loft level of the barn and the Contemporary Farm-to-Table exhibit highlighting that farm-to-table supply chain in the lower nine-hundred square feet of the barn. Pleased also to update you on phase two of the project, the development of our plaza. You see there Commissioners, the sort of reddish-purple shape. Those are the three point six-three acres that the Stockyards Egg Experience owns. And we purchased this property in April of this year. And we, of course, intend to apply for tax-exempt status soon, so please stay tuned. We have signed a memorandum of understanding with the city of Sioux Falls. The intention with the development that we're about to highlight for you will be turned over to the Parks Department upon its completion in twenty nineteen. So what you're seeing there, not only in our sort of red-purple area, but also the yellow and the green are the area that represents approximately forty-nine acres that would have been the Sioux Falls Stockyards until two thousand nine. The yellow is now owned by Excel Energy and the green has been parceled. Much of that property is owned by Smithfield. We have undertaken a site concept plan that divides that three point six-three acres into four interpretive sections, highlighting the cultivation, raising, tending, and celebrating of agriculture on the site. You can see we've done a good bit of detailed planning and some of these renderings, I think, give you an even better idea. These photographs represent our designers' almost Pinterest board, actual ideas in practice, implemented elsewhere that we intend to bring. So some are very representational, such as the tractor play structures. And others are a bit more abstract, such as the internally-lit meerkats that you see that have inspired us to create something similar, highlighting the three species that would have been sold at the Stockyards. When put together, this is a perspective view from North Weber Avenue. Again, the property sits at the corner of North Weber Avenue and East Falls Park Drive, so about a hundred yards from Falls Park. The basic concept is the structure that you can see elevated from the ground is approximately sixty-foot of catwalk salvaged from the Stockyards property for adaptive reuse. So from there and pressing back into the three acres, there are different areas of interpretation, play structures, places where we can interpret those stories. And then, of course, picnic structure like you'd find in other parks and restrooms. The structures themselves are reminiscent of vintage barn, vintage machine shed farm structures. We've planned approximately forty-five to fifty-five head-in parking stalls. And there you can see the iconic Sioux Falls Stockyards Big Pig in our donor recognition area. You can see there's lots of elements. We believe programming and keeping this area fresh and exciting is very important. So you see square bales, round bales, machinery, things that could be moved seasonally as well as more permanently installed elements such as the water feature. There's lots of crop plots, opportunity for us to bring livestock, to host special events, even host weddings. We understand we'll be successful when someone wants to have their wedding reception here at Stockyards Plaza. So we're pleased that we've teed up the management agreement structure with the city to offer those opportunities. We believe the project has great impact. The City Parks and Rec Department estimates that a million visitors visit Falls Park each year. In twenty sixteen, two-hundred-and-sixteen thousand provided their demographic or their zip code information to the Visitor Information Center at Falls Park. You're very familiar with our MSA and driving distance, so those represent our primary audiences. I'm pleased to report that since we opened the doors of the museum in March of this year, we have had visitors from forty-seven states and eight foreign countries. So they're coming from a great distance, but the, the depth is coming from our area. And we've got the great opportunity to educate citizens and visitors of all ages about the impact of agriculture, not only in historic context, but in contemporary practice as well. We believe this, this process has a opportunity to, to help transform the area of town where it will be placed and the great opportunity to convene conversations about agriculture to really add to the cluster and synergy of activity happening in Falls Park with the development of the pavilion, with the development of Levitt Pavilion and the farmer's market, as well as the asset that is the park and others in that area. And of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Appreciate the opportunity to educate you Commissioners on our project and appreciate your support as we move forward.
Thank you, Jennifer. Anyone have questions, comments? Commissioner Hyburger?
Just a comment. Jennifer presented to, about a month ago, out to, to the Fair Board and that was why I asked her to come here. Just, it's, to me, it's super exciting. It's, again, highlighting, it's an important part of our county, Minnehaha County, is agriculture and bringing it into the city so people that don't come out in the county and see what we do are being educated. I've got five grandkids and I'm super excited to take them out and start educating them, too, so.
Great, but we don't want them to be in that seven percent that believes chocolate milk comes from brown cows. So, the four-point-one-million-dollar project has raised one-point-two-million dollars actually outside of Sioux Falls before our chamber-approved community appeal, which is in progress now through March thirty-first. So we look to bring you the plaza development beginning in twenty eighteen and bring the kids out beginning in twenty nineteen.
Any comments? Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a lot of memories and they seem like fond memories now from when I was younger and worked at the telephone company fixing phones out there. And that was before cell phones and, you know, it was impossible to figure out where all this stuff was because there were like ninety different businesses in that Stockyard Exchange building. And then you took the catwalk out into the area there and, you know, find out some cow had eaten the wire and. It, when I got home after doing that, my dog really was interested in me. But, you know, and it's actually a little bit even more than that. I, I can remember the restaurant across the way we went to all the time, where men who know meat, meet to eat. And, you know, for whatever reason, the boss didn't like to see four or five telephone trucks parked there. When we went to the hospital and had coffee there, they didn't care. But at, at the cafe there, it was an amazing place and I'm really sorry that it's gone. I had a friend who worked out there and he also had a job as a correctional officer at the penitentiary. And I accused him of having the same job at two different locations. But he said he did not use a cattle prod up at the pen, but I'm not sure. Anyway, I'm really looking forward to seeing more of this. And I, wow, it's, it's a, it's a lost, lost story right now. And I, I'd like to see more memories preserved.
Commissioner, it may be worth noting, to develop the Stockyards History Exhibit, which of course we invite you to the barn to come and see, we did engage in a contractual relationship with the Siouxland Heritage Museums and they've helped us tell that story and we're really appreciated, appreciative of that asset in the community as well.
Any other comments? Anyone from the board like to make comments? You'll need to come into the mic, I should have said that before, sorry.
This is hard to believe today with all the wonderful restaurants we have in town. But at one time, the best place in town to get a steak was at the Stockyards Cafe.
Yep.
And the fellow that owned it, a Greek, George Karas, he cut his own meat right down in the basement of the cafe. But that was the best place in town to get a steak.
We do need your name and address, I'm sorry.
Bob Schultz, four eighty-one oh nine, West two-hundred-and-eighty-third Street, Canton, South Dakota.
Thanks, Bob. Any other comments, Lee or Jim? This would be the first time I've ever heard you say something.
Throwing, throwing down the gauntlet, Mr. Chair.
Jim Wooster, thirty-one oh one, South Sixth Avenue in Sioux Falls. Just very simply, I spent forty-three years there and, and the phone bring back a lot of memories. We were always out, at some point it was our fault, not the board's fault. The history includes a complex of John Morrell, truck lines, railroads. We, we want to get in a conversation with Burlington. I, I think Dana summed it up about the impact of this project. Dana, by the way, was our chair for our regional campaign. He will also, you and Mike Begum are chairing our community. But when you think about raising a million-three or a million-two, whatever it was, outside of the city for a project in the city, it, it says a lot about the relationships that the community outside of Sioux Falls had with, with, with that Stockyards. It was, it was important to you and it was, it was just, just, there's connections everywhere, so. But I'd forgotten about the phones.
Thank you, Jim.
Appreciate it, thanks, guys.
Lee, would you, you're the last one, so.
Lee Larson, three twenty-five East Autumn Lane, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. And I, first of all, want to clarify for Jeff that, or Commissioner Barth, that we're not going to have Al Silvermoon Bar. Be limited to a more family-friendly thing. But I, I just want to share an experience I had last Friday. I have a seven-year-old granddaughter who lives here in Sioux Falls. She had not been to the barn. Went down to the barn and we have a, I'm not sure what Jen calls it, but a tub of corn there. And there was another little boy that was probably four. And I, I have pictures, I mean, they just jumped in and he's doing the tractor thing and she's, and the kids were totally engaged, which amazed me. But I'll tell you why it's that good. Jen is doing a great job as our executive director. And we have a board member by the name of Suzanne Hague, who is Larry Ness's sister. And she was a classmate of mine at Augustana. And I told Jim that I thought we could use her on the board because Dale Larson played, paid for a tremendous amount of education. If you've ever been to the Brookings Children's Museum, she's the one that built that. And he flew her all over the country and, and we, there's no one else that we could find that would have that kind of experience. It delayed our process by a few months, but the, the exhibits are fantastic. One of them, for example, is a scanner that, and we have shelves of all, you know, sugar, cereal, all kinds of household products. And you take and scan it and then it tells you about that product. So if you have children or grandchildren or relatives, friends, whatever, I would encourage you to come down there and, and experience it for yourself. I've really been disappointed because I spent the last several years of my life working in marketing with Wells Fargo. And I am frustrated because we still can't put up a now-open sign. I, I'd want to paint it on the, on the roof, now open, because a lot of people don't realize. You know, they go, what is that? So, but we'll get there. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Any other comments or questions? Thank you for coming and thank you for your presentation. I know it's going to be successful and it's frankly the roots of, literally, I guess, the roots of our community, so we appreciate that. Good luck. Commissioner Bender, you want to?
Commissioner Benega has to leave, so it's up to the B team to take over here now. So that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is item twelve, which is authorize the Chair or Vice Chair to approve by initialing corrected total of amendment number one to the Design Services Agreement between Minnehaha County and JSA. D A, DJ Boothby.
Good morning Commissioners, DJ Boothby, Highway Superintendent. On November twenty-first, the Highway Department presented to you an amendment to an agreement with JSA Engineers for the preliminary design of Highway one forty-nine reconstruction. The amendment amount was correct in that it was twenty-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. However, the amendment form that was used, the calculation from the original amendment dollar amount to the new amendment dollar amount, or the new agreement dollar amount, was incorrect. And so the revised corrected total is three-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand four-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and seventy-two cents. And so asking for the Chair or Vice Chairs initial on the amendment form to file on record at the Highway Department and the Auditor's Office.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next item is to authorize the Chair or the Vice Chair to sign the two thousand and eighteen Coroner Medical Examiner Agreement between Minnehaha County and Dr. Snell.
Good morning. Craig Dewey, Commission Office. This will be the first of several contracts that we'll be discussing today. As you mentioned, Commissioner Bender, this is the contract renewal for the coroner and the medical examiner. And the relationship with Dr. Kenneth Snell extends back a number of years. The terms are nearly identical to what they were last year for the two thousand and seventeen contract. As far as the budget's concerned, a breakdown for different service fees between the coroner, medical, and medical examiner are seventy-two thousand dollars for coroner services and that would be paid in equal monthly installments throughout the year. And then the medical examiner fees are for two-hundred-twenty-four thousand two-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and ninety-six cents. The expense estimates for the two thousand and eighteen budget, which were approved in the general fund budget by the Commissioners in September, are sixty-seven thousand five hundred. So that would bring the total budget up to three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and ninety-six cents. As budgets in the county have gone in previous years, increases were minimal. Regarding the two thousand and eighteen contract is up one percent compared to the two thousand and seventeen contract. And particularly since this contract has expenses that are estimates for expenses, there is a clause in the contract that indicates when expenses do exceed eighty percent of the total budget that Dr. Snell and the county will meet together to determine if a budget supplemental is required. I would be happy to answer any questions, but would look for your approval on this contract renewal.
Any questions for Craig?
Madam Chair, Dr. Snell is a valuable asset to our region, including our county, of course. And I would make a motion to authorize you, the Vice Chair, to sign this contract.
I'd second that, I think Commissioner Karski has a comment.
Yeah, my first go-around with this one. So we have a coroner and a medical examiner, is that?
It's the same person.
Same person.
Okay. And I've heard great things about Dr. Snell, too, from many people, so he's paid basically two salaries? Is that what I'm reading here?
Jobs, it's, he gets one salary, he has two, he has two different positions. And it's a contract with Sanford. Actually, I could let you answer these questions.
Commissioner Hyburger is correct. It is two different positions, but under the same umbrella for the individual who performs those positions. And the contract is with Sanford, as Commissioner Hyburger indicated.
I guess I have to do homework. I confused what the difference is between a coroner and a medical examiner, technically, what. You guys have done this before, so.
Additional comment that really has no relevance, but Dr. Snell came here in January of about two thousand and ten or eleven, I don't remember for sure which one, probably the coldest day of the year. And he's from like Alabama and I never thought he'd stay, but he has stayed and he's been a wonderful addition to our county and, and surrounding counties, too, so.
And Dr. Snell was a good partner in the budgeting process, given the thin margins that the county operates under budgetarily. Initially, the fees that he was requesting were higher, but in the negotiation process, he went back to the drawing board and was able to reduce those fees. So we're only seeing a one percent increase for the two thousand and eighteen contract.
Madam Chair, I think that being a coroner is actually an official job. Every county has got one. They, they may have no medical standing. Being the medical examiner, I think we only have two forensic pathologists in the state and our nation is actually underserved on forensic pathologists. And I know that Brad Randall, Dr. Brad Randall, Dr. Snell's predecessor, said he suspects that many criminal deaths around the state are undiscovered because they're not taken a look at by a true pathologist. But a coroner in every county, I think, makes a decision outside of, say, the sheriff about whether or not this looks bad. And so I think there are two different things. And the coroner has been a centuries-old position, whereas the medical examiner is a scientist.
Any more questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So Craig, you want to move on to the next contract, which is under item 14? And it's the contract between Minnehaha County and Dr. Jeff Luther?
Yes, this is the Quality Assurance Director Contract for 2018 for rural ambulance service. And back in the early 2000s, Minnehaha County adopted licensing ordinances for ambulances to provide funding for rural ambulances and provide quality assurance, to make sure that quality maintained, high-quality, rather, was maintained in that service delivery. The ordinance authorized the appointment of the contract position for Quality Assurance Director for Rural Ambulance Services to be able to analyze and measure that service delivery. Currently, Dr. Jeff Luther serves as the Quality Assurance Director. In the calendar year 2017, he has been a partner of the county's for a number of years. And the contract language and contract amount for 2018 is the same as in 2017, and that's a total of $30,000. It is paid in 12 equal monthly installments. One other note that I'd like to make for you, in the process of submitting this contract, I learned from the Auditor's Office that there was an update to the ordinance. So if you look at page two of the contract, at the very bottom, MC 31-3-10 should be replaced And that was updated back in October of 2016.
So do we have to amend this? Or how does that get changed?
Maggie is shaking her head yes. Maggie, do you want to chime in on what you think the correct process is?
Well, I think that what you could do is solicit a motion to approve with the error, the typographical error, basically corrected. Or you can reschedule it for next week. I suspect that time is somewhat of the essence here. It's a change that I think could be easily made immediately. And then the corrected document signed, as long as the motion included that change.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion to amend the document before us to show MC, is it 33-4-? To that, and then to approve this contract.
Second. Motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Point of order. Is that a motion just to make the correction or the motion to pass?
Both.
Both?
To make that amendment and to approve the contract.
Okay.
Is that what you got, Olivia? Okay. All right, we're good. Okay, that takes us to item 15, which is to authorize the chair or vice chair to sign the 2018 lease agreement with Metro Communications Agency. Craig Dewey, once again.
The third contract up for your renewal is the lease with Metro Communications, who leases space from Minnehaha County in the Public Safety Building. The lease has typically run annually and runs from January 1st through December 31st. The terms for the 2018 lease renewal remain the same as 2017, with rent set at $11.40 a square foot. That lease rate has been in effect since 2010. 2010 was the last time the rate was increased from $11 a square foot to $11.40 a square foot. As part of that contract and lease, it stipulates that the county will provide utilities, housekeeping, and upkeep of the facility as part of the lease. And as directed by the commission, you asked the commission office to explore options for increasing rent in future years, given that the past seven years Metro has not had a rent increase as part of the lease. So following a direction from the commission, language was inserted into the 2018 lease contract, indicating that lease escalator language will take effect for the 2019 lease, in accordance with the most local version of the CPI, Consumer Price Index, that HR uses to conduct studies to make sure that compensation remains competitive. And that is the Midwest Urban Consumer Price Index. And again, that escalator language won't take place until 2019 because the county budget was approved back in September, along with Metro Communications budget. We and you, as a commission, thought that it would be unfair to spring a surprise lease increase on Metro without some advanced planning. So in terms of following that, again, the contract for the 2018 lease will keep rent at $11.40 a square foot, which means the total value of the lease will be $48,974.40. And there has been communication with Metro. Anna, their business manager, and I have had correspondence. She did not indicate there are any concerns. And it looks like there's a representative here from Metro as well to answer any additional questions.
Okay, first we'll take any questions for Craig. If not, do you have any comments on behalf of Metro?
Unless there is a question.
Any questions?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, if I might comment, I think that Dean and I represent this commission on the Metro Board. And we have a meeting coming up next week. Dean, are you going to be there?
I will be here for an NACO meeting.
Okay.
South Dakota Association of County Commissioners, not NACO.
I was at a NACO meeting last week. Yeah, this will be a state meeting next week.
So anyway, I guess we'll know more at that time if there are other issues there.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes us to item 16, to authorize the chair or vice chair to sign the 2018 IVC Housing Contract between Minnehaha County and the Carroll Institute. Craig Dewey.
This is the last contract up for renewal for my end here this morning. This is with the Carroll Institute for Involuntary Commitment Housing. And this is, again, a contract renewal. The terms of the agreement remain the same as 2017. A few of the provisions that are covered in this agreement include the contract running from January 1 to December 31st. There are other contracts that are active at other points in the year, as far as the beginning and the end date, which is why I mentioned that to you. The Carroll Institute provides housing and program services for up to four individuals a day at their facility located downtown here on Spring Avenue. And in the event that the bed count, if it exceeds four beds a day, certainly Carroll Institute and the county are willing to come together to address that disparity through negotiations to bridge any funding gaps. Thirdly, the total value of this contract for 2018 would be $111,330. That is paid in 12 equal monthly installments. And again, that is the same dollar amount as with 2017. Another important provision that is included in this contract, as far as schedules for transport for anyone who receives an order for this treatment, the Sheriff's Department does provide transportation from Detox or jail to the Carroll Institute and the involuntary treatment program. According to the schedule determined by the sheriff, there haven't been any issues that have arisen from that. I would be happy to answer any questions. I do know that there was at least one or two questions from a commissioner regarding some different numbers that Detox would be in a much better position to be able to answer and representatives here from Detox.
Any questions for Craig?
General question. I was just going through the contract. And under the insurance section, the one that usually catches my eye, the requirement for $1 million per occurrence is pretty standard, but to have a $3 million aggregate's a little unusual in that the aggregate is usually double the occurrence limit. And I don't know if that sets a, you know, any sort of unusual burden on, you know, the Carroll Institute to have that in there as part of the contract. And it just caught my eye because it is an unusual factor when you look at an insurance contract. So a comment, I don't know if anybody is able to address that, but it just seems unusual.
If there's not a follow-up comment on that, I would just like to add some information in terms of working with the State's Attorney's Office regarding this liability language. It was reviewed by the State's Attorney, and there were some small revisions in terms of the wording that were put in place. And it was determined that the language that's in this current contract would be the most appropriate, given the current environment of state statutes and so forth.
Okay. Carol?
Carol Muller, Commission Office. I was just going to add in there that we didn't do any changing to that contract. It was pretty minor in terms of those things. So that has been the existing contract for a few years.
Okay, okay.
Don't have to fess up. I was the commissioner that had some questions and didn't realize I was going to be chairing. But if you wouldn't mind coming up and just giving a little bit report about how the program has run, kind of how many people you typically see, what kind of bed utilization there is, that would be helpful to me, anyway. Oh, and you, I'm sorry, you need to introduce yourself, say your name and address. Thanks.
Good morning, Beth, the Program Director of Detox.
I think we need your last name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Beth Brown.
Okay, thanks, Beth.
So the program is, we send people over to New Horizons that are on IVC holds, and they can take them if they have an order for an IVC already. Our current bed is four, as he stated, and the daily census, right now, the average daily census for this past year was two at Carroll Institute.
So have there been any issues? Has the program been running fairly smoothly?
Yes, we originally went from eight beds to four beds, and it's been running very smoothly. We don't typically exceed the four. There are times when we are full with them, and they do usually work really well to make accommodations so that we can get an extra person there. But typically, we don't exceed that number of four, and it's been running very smoothly, especially once we get the orders for those people to be officially on an IVC. The judges have signed the orders. It works well. And then we still continue to communicate with them about treatment placement and get the individual placed into treatment.
Okay. Any questions for Beth? I dragged her all the way down here. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just make a quick comment. Carrie Benz from Human Services. In regards to this contract, I think the part that is so beneficial about this contract is that it allows for Detox to do exactly that. It provides that detox service. And once someone is ready to proceed in that form of treatment, Detox is really not the appropriate environment for that to take place. And so by allowing us to transfer those individuals over to the Carroll Institute/New Horizons, is what they call that program, it allows them to engage in a better and more treatment, supporting environment, rather than being in detox. And so the minute that they set foot and begin their involvement with New Horizons, they actually can start addressing their treatment needs, rather than sitting in detox and basically kind of just sitting idle. Certainly, detox staff do their best to engage people and do some basic trainings. But obviously, in detox, we all know that detox's purpose is to administer care and supervision to those who are struggling to come off of a substance. And so often, those individuals struggle with having the ability to focus and participate a great deal. But by the time they're ready to transition over to New Horizons, if they're seeking treatment, the best part is they can actually engage in that from that very first day, rather than sitting in detox and not being able to do that. So this contract allows for a much better flow, and it allows Detox to have open beds to treat those that actually then need that particular service of detoxing. So it really promotes a much better flow and the availability to treatment is there for them.
Any questions for Carrie? Just as a point of clarification, because we keep talking about New Horizons, the contract is with Carroll. So New Horizons is a program run by Carroll Institute?
Correct, yes. So Carroll Institute has the Arch, which is their main program for treatment. But then New Horizons is basically kind of a side house that they have refurbished and made more conducive to single rooms and sometimes double bunk in those rooms, so that it's basically preparing people to launch into their formal treatment at the Arch.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski?
Not a question, but, you know, I'm breaking this down in my mind, what we're actually doing with this contract. So there's an individual that's basically in, and correct me if I'm wrong, or just describe what's happening here. But somebody's in detox and they've been court ordered to enter treatment. So this program takes those individuals, an average of two a day, throughout the course of the year. Is that?
I don't want to speak for Beth, but I think that it's basically that census of two a day is a pretty fluid number, no pun intended. But it's a number that, pending how many people that are in detox and are ready to make that transition, I think that's greatly dependent upon the weather. I think it's greatly dependent upon what attorney is being utilized to have that IVC transpire. And so really, the contract, what that does is it allows bed availability in detox to take the people that need that service and placement for those that are ready for treatment to actually pursue that while allowing us to move forward with other people in a detox mode.
You know, if I may use an interesting term, you say, "ready for treatment," but in reality, they're ordered to go to.
They are. And so whether they're wanting to go or not is irrelevant. With IVCs, it is identified that they need to go there. It's an involuntary commitment. And the judge has identified that that is the best mode for them to take in regards to their care. I think that moving forward, we have had many conversations about how we can make a better process in hopes of utilizing, streamlining the use of attorneys to maybe one or two, and then be able to better address how stipulations should be written and treatment pursued in a better way than what it is currently. It's kind of the tail wagging the dog at this point.
Okay. So the question then becomes, you know, the metrics, how do we measure the success of this program, what we're doing here? And so the average length of stay for a person, I'm just curious about the whole, what we have going on here, more than the contract. But somebody's court ordered to go there, how long are they with you typically?
Our average length of stay is six days.
Six days?
Yes.
Okay, and in those six days, you're tasked with determining if they're treatable? I mean, what, they're not going to get the cure in six days?
Right, right, exactly. Our task is to, one, get them off the substance, or at least to a point where they're no longer needing observation every 15 minutes, 30 minutes. And then we also assess them. Our lead counselor does an assessment on them and makes a determination as to what criteria do they meet for what level of care for treatment placement. And usually, you know, answering your earlier question, usually the individual is more engaged in, at New Horizons, the Carroll Institute program, because they have a little bit more freedom than they do in our locked detox center, where they have to wear the uniforms and, you know, have the jail food and things like that. So they're a little bit more engaged over there. And they, you know, it's not a locked facility, so they make the choice not to run and engage in the program there.
So it's kind of a transition or transitory place for them to go, with the next step being determined by you guys to help point them in a direction, or?
Correct. It's like a pre-treatment service.
Okay, okay.
So many of them are either waiting for an inpatient program or to get into a halfway house, because halfway house beds are usually a couple months out. And so if they're at the Carroll Institute at New Horizons, they usually can get them in sooner into the Arch or other facilities that we refer them to.
Okay, okay. And I appreciate, you know, you answering my questions. It's, you know, when you get to sit up here in this position and you look at all the things that county taxpayer dollars go to, and you look at 100, was it 111,000?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Dollars going, you know, of taxpayer money going to this, I think it's only fair that people have an understanding of what their county does and what we have going on here. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Okay, at this point, I think.
I would just make a comment, Madam Chair. Dean pointed out the cost to the county, 111,000. But that's actually staying the same for next year. And when we have an operation that comes in at the same rate as last year, so to speak, that's really a good thing for us, since our income is so limited. And that's good.
Okay, I think I'd entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming. So that takes us to item 18, Liaison. So that takes us to item 18, Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports today? Commissioner Karski?
Briefly, one of my liaison duties is with the, directly related to our last contract here with the Triage Project, and I spent last Wednesday and Thursday night, Thursday and Friday all day in Phoenix, Arizona, with about 28 other community leaders, maybe sheriffs or mayors, county commissioners, et cetera, from around the entire county, our country, discussing what has been working in Phoenix with their unique needs. And I say "unique" because every county is unique, but we do have similar things going on, especially when it comes to these types of needs in our community. So I learned a lot and hope to bring that back to the Policy Committee of the Triage Project so that we can continue to move this pilot forward, so we can see, hopefully, improvements in our community. And, you know, when we look at $111,000 on this one thing, I mean, that's the type of thing that the Triage Project is working on, and this is just one thing. When we look at the cost to our community of the dependency, alcohol, chemical, whatever it is, and the people going to emergency rooms, and literally the millions of dollars it costs to take care of these problems in our community, how we can better handle them and take care of them. It's going to be an interesting process, and it's, we have over two dozen people just on the Policy Committee here in Sioux Falls for the Triage Project. So you'll be hearing more and more about it as we come to, hopefully, early spring, getting our pilot off the ground and making this all come together.
Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Commissioner Barth?
Just comment on a couple things. One, in planning, last week I attended part of a full day of presentations by the Dakota Rural Action People, and it was, it was good. Certainly, I wouldn't agree with everything, but I wouldn't disagree with everything either, so it was a good deal. We also have applications for our Planning Commission. We have two vacancies on our Planning Commission, and we have applications in excess of two, and so that's also good. One is Becky Randall, who would like to stay as commissioner. Our chairperson, Mike Seifer, is leaving us after 20 years. Then I would touch on the museum, which I'm also liaison to. And last week, we found out that there was a $50,000 contribution from the Hall family to the Museum Alliance, and today I found out that there was a $100,000 contribution to the museum endowment. Those are really positive developments for all of us in this community. And I look forward to a day when the museum could be self-supporting.
I think we would all look forward to that day, but that was very good news this morning, so. Any further liaison reports? If not, is there any new business? Or any none? Any old business?
Carol was going to speak on something, and old business for me, and it escapes my mind what it was, but I knew she would remember, so I emailed her yesterday and asked if she could speak on something quickly. Oh, I know what it was. Here she goes. I'm going to let her do it. It was on reimbursement from the state on our mental health evaluation.
Commissioner Hyburger, thank you for the reminder.
So, I just forgot myself, so, but Carol has some notes to share with us.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. And yes, one of the things that came out of a group last year that met, a task force through the governor's office and also through the South Dakota Supreme Court Justice, was a recommendation, because there was such a backlog and a challenge to have competency evaluations conducted at HSC. So a financial fund was set up for that, to which the counties can apply for reimbursement. And we had our first set of numbers go off. It did, there's, I don't know the total yet, but I know it was significant numbers that went into us, and we do appreciate the work of the courts, because they had to do some research on each of those cases also. For this, these were any competency evaluations that were after April 1, 2017, and they were only the competency evaluations. They weren't any of the others that often get done. And we had, I think, 26 that we submitted for, and I know that will be reviewed to make sure that hits all the standards there, and we'll see what comes back from the state of South Dakota.
This is the first go-around with this fund. It's being administered by the South Dakota Association of County Commissions for the whole state of South Dakota, and we will just see how it goes forward. I think there's $110,000 for the whole state. I think that's right. It's either $100 or $110,000 for the whole state to be distributed out over a year. There are two pay periods that we can send in those bills. And so I guess we'll just kind of see how it goes and see if there has to be any tweaking done after a year or so of this in effect. Hopefully, it will be helpful. This was in place of us having HSC do it. Now we can, we have someone do it locally. There's a list of people that have expanded who can do these competency evaluations in hopes of driving the cost down and of not having the transportation down to HSC. And HSC turned the money over and is no longer paying for this.
And also, the goal is to have competency evaluations done in a more timely manner, which is a critical, very important part.
Thank you. Any further old business? I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session for contracts, litigation, and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll reconvene in about five minutes.